Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is a joint council, mayor workshop on the NITD double track. This will be the last one as far as I know. I'm going to circulate a sign-in sheet. People can go ahead and sign in and pass it on. I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Mike Nolan and his team.
I think we've got a mic up. You got one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the council and for the board of works for giving us this opportunity to come to you tonight and walk through the plans for the parking garage, the operation and maintenance of the facility. We'll show you some renderings what the garage looks like, so some of you may not have seen those. And we're here to answer your questions. So I have with us today, we have from AECOM's team, Raymond Smith.
Frank Smith.
Raymond Smith. I don't know how or why, I can't remember Raymond's last name. Nicole Barker, who's a project leader, Connor Nolan, who has no relation to me, Yorasth Devi, and Graham Renzi, who's with our project team, and he's our deputy project manager. So thank you for having us here tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Connor Nolan here. I'd like to start by walking through the elements of the operations, operations and maintenance agreement, how it works between what NITD's responsibilities are, what the city's responsibilities are, and what our long-term partnership hopefully will be.
Thank you, Mike. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So we already went through our introductions, and we're going to run through the operations and the maintenance agreement. We're going to go over the structures that we're going to build. That's the station, the parking structure, parking garage, and the commercial spaces that are going to be attached to it. And then the green space that's left over along Franklin Street that the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission is going to be working on, developing for transit-oriented development. We'll go over the responsibility for the three areas, and then the cost, the funding sources, potential future parking fees, and the future TOD. And for anyone who's not aware, it's been in the news, but we've received in advance $50 million from the Federal Transit Administration for double-track out of the federal share. And they've accelerated our timeline to the full funding grant agreement. So we've been anticipating that in July 2021, and last month they informed us they want it done by January of 2021. So that's moved up our timeline to the grant agreement, moved up our timeline for real estate acquisition, and it'll move up our timeline for construction next year. So the elements of the building are the station block, the ground itself, the building design, then the station, the park construction, and commercial spaces. And for anyone who's unfamiliar, the station block is between Franklin and Pine Street and 10th and 11th Streets, where the current historic station still sits today. The block is going to be demolished, that historic facade is going to be preserved, and the new structure is going to be built and occupied between 11th and 10th Street and from Pine Street to about 40 feet away from Franklin Street on the west side. NITD owns its current parking lot. Michigan City owns the historic station, and Michigan City Redevelopment is acquiring the other properties on the block that NITD will then demolish as part of its construction contract. Michigan City will grant NITD the right to use the block for its parking garage and station. And then again, the frontage along Franklin Street will be developed separately by the redevelopment commission. And here's an overview. Can everyone see that okay? And it's also printed out. It may be a little small. Just to kind of give a visual of what we're talking about, this area I'm circling with the mouse with the yellow arrow on the screen is that 40 feet of frontage along Franklin And I know Mayor Perry and Councilmember Dabney are familiar with the process we went through with the Historic Review Board. NITD and its engineering team at AECOM went through an extensive review with Historic Review Board and Indiana Landmarks to make sure that this building would complement the historic district. First and foremost, we're going to preserve that historic facade and include it in the new building. We've added direct to the exterior and using vertical column-like elements throughout the building to break up its size. And two different colors of precast concrete to again, break up that mass of the building and make it fit in with other two-story buildings in the commercial district. Here's a rendering that will show what that will look like. And the colors aren't real life, but the concepts are there, the vertical elements, the brick, the two tones of precast concrete. And what you see here is the commercial spaces on the first floor along 11th Street. You can see the historic facade down at the platform, and this is the grade crossing that'll be at Franklin Street. And you can see a train there on the right side of the foot up. And the green space running on the left side of the screen is where that future TOD can This is just a view from the east side, from where Pine Street currently is. You can see the walk-up ramp to the front of the station and the platform and the entry and exit for the parking area. And this is just a rendering at night along 11th Street with the platform canopies removed so you can see the effect of the entire station lit up and what that will look like. And last, just an overhead aerial shot. You can see some cars shown on the rooftop level and canopies and trains and the new one-way 11th Street. So we'll get back to the three main parts of the building. We have the new passenger station, the three-level parking structure that will be for commuters and the general public, and then the commercial spaces on 11th Street. On the station side, again, NITD's committed one-half million dollars to preserve and reincorporate that historic facade. NITD will be responsible for all maintenance and all repairs in the station area. And we're going to have a fully accessible ADA compliant station. It's going to have restrooms, ticket vending machines, and direct access out onto the new high-level platform on 11th Street. And you can access the station from inside the garage, from Franklin Street, and from Pine Streets. The parking structure will have 437 spaces opening deck. It's being designed so that two additional levels can be added in the future without reconstructing the entire garage. There'll be priority parking for commuters Monday through Friday until 2 PM and on a few event days. That would be Laual Palooza or Chicago Air and Water Show, big events in the city where we expect to have your ridership. A few of those events are in the operations and maintenance agreement. And if you have a new event come up, we will get written notice to the city ahead of time that that's going to happen and keep the lines of communication open at all times. And then the parking structure is the area of the building. Michigan City would be responsible for the day-to-day operations and day-to-day maintenance. NITD will remain responsible for the capital costs. That would be any repairs to the masonry and concrete that exceed $25,000 in a year, any major structural elements, any major systems, repairs or replacements. Those roles will all be on NITD. And then the last area is the two commercial spaces. NITD will be responsible for these areas and managing the tenants, maintaining them, and repairing them. And NITD will take the net revenues from the commercial spaces and apply it to the operations and maintenance costs that Michigan City is responsible for, for the parking structure. So the costs and the funding sources, AECOM's team has put together an estimate of an order of magnitude for the annual operations and maintenance expenses for the garage and the parking structure. There's three categories. Dumb lawyer breakdown is day-to-day, category one, monitoring the garage, cleaning up, collecting the trash. They estimate that to be $10,500 a year. Category two is the ongoing operations, that's landscaping around the outside, replacing the lights, doing snow removal. That's $95,000 a year. And category three is ongoing maintenance, minor repairs, HVAC inspections, and that's $25,000 a year estimated. So it's a total of $131,000 on an ongoing basis. The estimated capital costs after five years is $19,500. After 10 years, it's estimated to be $425,000. After year 20 is $660,000. These are all NITD's responsibility. So these are not any costs we're expecting Michigan City to bear, and Michigan City shouldn't plan to bear them. For the funding sources for that $131,000 a year for the ongoing day-to-day operations and maintenance, NITD will be contributing the net revenue from the commercial spaces. And then until NITD authorizes Michigan City to collect a parking fee, NITD will cover any deficit between Michigan City's costs that are covered by the net rental revenue and those that aren't. So if it costs $131,000 to run the garage for a year, commercial rent is $100,000, NITD will pay the additional $31,000 until a parking fee can be charged. We would just expect Michigan City to pay the money first or incur the cost first and invoice NITD, and it'll be paid in 30 days. But once the parking fees are established, NITD will still contribute to commercial rent, it just will no longer fund that deficit. We expect the parking fees will be sufficient to cover that. In the event they are not, for whatever reason, NITD doesn't expect to cover the deficit anymore at that point. And the explanation on parking fees, at this point, it might be better for you to handle this. I'll take this one.
If we go into a fee for parking arrangement, that's something we're going to do system-wide. It's not something we're going to do at one particular station. Otherwise, you divert people from station to station. So this will be a policy decision at the NITD board, because if we charge for parking here, people tend to go to where it's free if you're not charging somewhere else. So at some point in time, we're going to charge for parking, but it'll be a system-wide decision. We're going to have the same issue for the Westlake project. So rather than say, day one, we're going to charge for parking here in Michigan City, we're not going to charge for it, but we're not going to say to Michigan City that you have to make up the deficit on that. So until we come up with the decision system-wide from a policy decision, we're going to cover that basis. And then once we make the decision, typically you see over on the Chicago side on the metro system, you see about $1.50 a day or so for indoor covered parking. If we're getting, you know, we can do revenue projections, but the revenue projections on the parking based upon ridership, if we've got system-wide parking, should more than cover the operating and maintenance cost of the facility. But I wanted to explain why we're not going to be charging for parking day one, but since we're not, that's not going to be a Michigan City expense.
Thank you, Mike. The last piece that we have in our slide deck is the future transit-oriented development. Already gone over it a couple of times, but again, the west 40 feet of the station block on Franklin Street is being reserved by the Redevelopment Commission for future development. And the west wall of parking structure has been designed so it can be punched through in the future and connected to a new building. So the new building will still have direct access to the garage, whether it's on the ground level or the second level. And in the all-in-all agreement, we have flexibility with how the parking spaces in the garage get allocated. So if a developer wants to reserve parking spaces for whatever they're bringing to the table, whether that's retail or residential, we have baked into this agreement flexibility between NITD and Michigan City in accommodating that developer and still providing enough spaces for NITD's commuters to satisfy the Federal Transit Administration. So that's the end of my presentation, but we're really here to hear from the council and the board of works to open it up, any questions, concerns, and comments.
Question, remember me?
Thank you guys for coming out and presenting to us. I have a couple of questions. So any major capital projects or maintenance to a facility, you guys will cover that 100%? Okay. And just so for clarity, the ability to add vertically if the need be for a parking structure is not a thing where you're projecting will be adding on to the building, it's just that if the need arises, it's already set up to go to additional levels?
In the agreement that we entered into with the city, there is a placeholder in there to add another 500 spaces for parking capacity. We're building the structure so that that can be accommodated. It is not projected to be needed for at least 20 years. Well, I mean, it could happen earlier depending upon demand. If that's happening, that's probably a really good thing. But the city could provide us 500 spaces somewhere else, but we decided that we should develop the parking structure so that if right now, it would be cheaper to be able to go vertically in the future rather than not have that ability. So it's being built so it can go up down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Following that question on the parking garage, I asked these questions before, and I also talked to the city planner months ago about projected costs. And since they're here and the redevelopment commission is here, I was wondering if any of those cost factors have been put together and how much we would be looking at spending on this parking garage in the future? And also from the redevelopment commission, how much money has been spent on land acquisition right now? And cleaning up that block?
Yes, we sit here, we haven't bought anything yet. We've offered out, made our offers, and we're in the process of purchasing. Originally, they set aside $1 million to purchase with, which it won't be that much. NITD has agreed to do the demolition for us, which takes another $1 million off the table for demolition, because we were going to pay for that as well. So they've agreed to demolish once all the buildings are purchased. We're working through that demolition contract right now, getting all the specifics about where to stop and when we take over. As far as the cleanup, we are aware of the corner that needs to be cleaned. We've done our analysis of that. The basic agreement, and this is not a hard and fast rule, but the basic agreement is anything above ground is we're cleaning up, anything below ground, NITD's cleaning up. Now, that's a general rule, and there could be exceptions to that, but that's kind of where we are at this point, until we have a better idea of what's going on underground. So for example, we know there's going to be contamination under where the garage is going to be, and we ought to resolve that issue, and NITD's going to do that. We still have a couple of issues with the tunnel to Franklin, but until such time as we can actually get there, have acquisition, have access to it, and actually see what's going on, that still is for further determination, both in terms of responsibility and cost.
So for the estimated annual operations, they have the category one, two, and three. For the landscaping, lighting, snow removal, that piece for us? So that's for us to decide on who, so if it's city employees or whoever it is, or do we have to buy some rules for who can do that work? That $95,000?
That $95,000 is driven just from an estimate side of what it would cost, but if you use city forces for it, you could, and that will save money, you can certainly do that.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure we didn't have some rules or something that we had to buy or buy.
No, and we asked Raymond, I think you helped us come up with these numbers. They've done parking garages across the country, so we asked them for just an order of magnitude to what you should expect for maintenance costs for a garage. So these numbers are just based upon historical expense. If you find a way to save on them, that's terrific.
Do you want Raymond to share a little bit about, do you want to share a little bit about your experience with these costs around the country?
Yeah, I mean, they're pretty typical around the country as far as, you know, different categories that we had, general maintenance and housekeeping. It all depends on how it's operated. If it's done by internal staff or if you're contracting it out, that will affect the price. It's usually, as you alluded earlier, it's cheaper if you do it through an house staff.
How does it usually work too, if there is a contractor doing that work? What are typical arrangements that you see? Is there any cost share, I think you shared?
It's normally just direct bill, whatever the entity is.
Okay, next question. Okay, thank you. First comment, not a question, but since NITD's spearheading this whole project from Chicago to Michigan City, and we're paying, and you're going to be spearheading the construction of the garage and the retail space below, why doesn't NITD just own the whole operation of it and take care of it besides, instead of giving it over to the city and making the city liable for it? Why doesn't NITD just operate the whole parking garage and be done with it? Why even have, why do we even need to have an agreement? Why doesn't NITD just do it?
Well, that's what we put in the operations, in the operating agreement we executed 40 years ago, number one. Number two, part of this is, is that it is a partnership here. And we're building the garage for the benefit of the commuters, but we're also building it for the benefit of the citizens of Michigan City. Because once our commuters are done at 2 o'clock, it's open for municipal use, however you want to use it, for the benefit of the residents, citizens, customers, however it needs to be used. So this is a partnership here. And what we put in 40 years ago was is that we would build it, it would be our funds to build it, we will handle the capital costs, but the city was going to operate and maintain. So that's the best guess I can give you, councilman.
Moving on from there, I got a helpful question here. As far as the greenery around the outside of the parking garage, whatever is decided to be planted there, when I saw the rendering, I would suggest seeing how some other public areas are taken care of, that we don't go crazy with putting plants in and putting bushes in. Because to me, it's just more maintenance, more cost, you know, to put sod in, in a public area like that and having hundreds of people walking through there on a daily basis. I can see, and I'm sure that you're all visualizing it, that the sod will get trampled down, and in a year's time, we'll have nothing but mud out there. So I'm just suggesting, and we don't do, get crazy with it, if we can put concrete in certain spots, that we go ahead and put concrete in it rather than to save a few dollars here, or we can just say, yeah, we have some greenery there. So that's a suggestion. The other thing that I'm going to say that I'm totally opposed to at this time, and I know that this is coming up before the board of works, I don't know if it's coming up this coming Monday or when it's coming up, but certainly looking at, there's an agreement here that this contract will be good for 50 years to the year 2070. I don't know the need to have a contract good for 50 years. A lot of things can happen in the amount of 50 years, and costs can go up, operation of the garage can go haywire, and you know, it's the city want to be involved with something like that. So I would suggest to the city administration and to the board of public works, when it comes time to vote on this, that you take a hard look at a 50-year agreement on the parking garage, that we don't even have the first iota built or anything in place right now.
Councilman, I may comment on that very quickly. It's a 50-year agreement. We've been here for 112 years as great partners with each other, but there's a one-year termination clause here. So if you want out, it's 49 years, 48 years. You tell us that you no longer want the partnership, and you can terminate it at that point. So if you see, if Michigan City sees that they're not getting the benefit out of that public partnership, that it's not generating the results for the citizens of the city that you want, and the costs are too high, you have a right to terminate this agreement. And then we take over operations and maintenance, but then it becomes an exclusive garage for the use of our commuters, and there's no, there's no public benefit for it. And so I think that you want to think that through, because there's TOD opportunities here, there's retail, residential opportunities. There's, we've already heard that there's businesses up along Franklin Streets that plan on having events that they know that they have access parking, that they can use in the garage. So I think you're covered with the fact that if it's going the wrong direction, you see this is something that's not working out for you, you just send us a termination notice and the agreement's over.
Okay, so that's in this contract?
Yes, it is.
Okay. What page would that be on? Just so I don't have to go through 30 pages.
It's in section 10B.
Okay. All right.
Does that address your concern? Pardon? Does that address the?
Yeah, I mean, if we have a year one, because how do you get that far? I didn't see that part of it. I saw this 50-year agreement. All right. As far as the future construction of additional floors or parking spaces, what have you, and that's a section, I'm looking on page five, section, page five, section five, where it says the community must take efforts to expand parking for the district. I don't understand why the city, why the city should have to spend their monies to expand parking for NITD. Why doesn't NITD pay for their own expansion of the parking lot since? And I know the city's going to be using the parking lot on occasions, but... city's gonna be using the parking lot on occasions, but on the main day-to-day basis, and it's there for the main purpose of NICTY and the riders, that NICTY should be responsible for any cost for that nature, to build an additional level or two levels or five hundred spaces. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Um, councilman, I just, the only I would say to that is, once again, that's something you agreed to and voted for forty years ago. It's in, in, on page four, section B. So this is nothing new, um, and something you voted for in favor of forty years ago. It's, it's in the agreement, that once we get to eighty-five percent, we sent you that notice, that it's verbatim language that comes out of our agreement.
Okay, well, if, well, I, I cannot say this then for the public. If I voted on it, yes, forty years ago, I disagree with it. No.
Okay.
We can let it go at that. Okay, thank you.
Hi, first of all, thank you for, uh, presenting this. I, I'm very relieved that the operating clause will basically be covered by you until we charge parking fees, so that's wonderful. So I am high praise for this project, I'm really looking forward to it, I think it's gonna be a gem, and any city would really love to have this project. Uh, and for the fifty-year contract, you know, when do you think, you know, the structural things are gonna start failing? It's not gonna be in the next five years, it's gonna be in twenty and thirty years. So I, for one, would think that the fifty-year contract is probably to our best interest in, uh, major concerns for repairs and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, wanna address some things that, uh, my, uh, brother had brought out, Councilman Don Presby, and first of all, I wasn't on the city council four years ago, and I've asked repeatedly for projected cost analysis on the structure being built, and it's not been produced to this date. I've asked the city planner for it, it has not been produced to this date. I also agree with my brother, Don, on the long-term contract that's being signed, and on, uh, page four, it says that after the initial term has expired, so I read that as after the fifty years, it can be agreed upon for an automatic renewal of five years. So, um, I don't think that we should be, uh, signing a fifty-year lease on this facility. And also, that reading this agreement, that how the, uh, who's gonna be responsible for when you start collecting parking fees on all the mechanisms and parking, uh, gates or whatever else that's in there? 'Cause I read this contract, that the city's gonna be responsible for that on the day-to-day maintenance.
The machines, the fee machine.
The, the cap- the capital cost in the machines will be, it'd be a NICTY cost rule installing machines. If there's maintenance on the machines, or if there's maintenance on lights or whatever, that will fall under the operated maintenance expense that the city will, will cover. Um, the, the city will also charge for parking for, and what's in the agreement as well. So, um, if, if, let's just say we're charging a dollar a day for commuters, you'll charge a dollar a day for residents to use the lot as well. So there'll be revenue coming in, but should be offsetting that expense.
Oh, okay, here's what I'm getting at. So there's gonna be an added cost in this for maintaining that equipment, and that's gonna fall under, the way I read this agreement, the city. So that means that we're gonna have to have either a contract with somebody to repair the equipment, or have somebody that's specialized in that kind of equipment, automatic gates, and electronic debit, and all that other stuff that's gonna be down there, is gonna be the responsibility of the city.
I would expect that's true. And no d- no differently than you probably, if for your HVAC, um, maybe hiring an HVAC contractor, comment if the, if the, um, if that system needs work, or the elevator, if the, if you need to repair the elevator, you're probably gonna call an elevator contractor. I suspect all of that is true.
Well, correct, and that's why I brought it up. So I think that, uh, you're sugarcoating, to put it mildly, the cost and, uh, the funding sources. So, um, it actually, when you guys determine this'll happen, that'll be an additional cost for us, and if it's a contract that we have to sign with somebody, it's an additional cost. So I think that these things need to be brought out, and this needs, uh, deeply to be scrutinized, and also that the, uh, you have a termination notice on page seven, that you basically can terminate this at any time, I, the way I read it. Uh, I didn't see nothing, is there anything that I'm missing here about the city, uh, walking out of this agreement?
I think you're referring to section ten A for, for NICTY's...
Correct.
Right to terminate, and the city's reciprocal right is in ten B, and that's, that's where if there's not funding, or there's not appropriations for the city's obligations, they can terminate at any time.
Yeah, I, I think people need to look at that. Shall have no right to terminate this agreement. So we can, we can argue about the convenience, uh, in parentheses, okay? Because I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, but I'm bringing this up for the public's knowledge and for the people that are here, the council members that are here. But I think this contract needs to be scrutinized before it's signed, and that there's things in here that need to be ironed out, and, you know, that, I think, I think there's a lot of things that are in not the best interest of the city. So that's for the council members, that we need to go through this, and the legal, uh, the legal staff in the city also needs to sit down and review this and negotiate this agreement. Because the way I read this contract, Amber, I hope you're listening, is that the Board of Works is gonna sign my right of way on vote, voting on this, the way it's stated on page two of this document. And when it says, uh, community and definitions, so I, I think that Don had, uh, Don had some good points, and, uh, I wanted to bring out those points, if anybody else wants to bring out anything, I hope they do, because it's not all what you have sitting in front of you. There's a lot of gray areas, to put it mildly.
Thank you. I'll just read the rest of ten B, that says, "In addition, community may terminate this agreement if the funds necessary for the community to fulfill its obligations under this agreement are not appropriated, and the funds in the restricted non-reverting fund described above have been exhausted." Those are the funds coming from the commercial spaces and any parking fees. So if there's not money available for the city's obligations, the city will always have a right to terminate this agreement.
And this has already gone through your council. So this is not something we've just presented to you, this has been thoroughly vetted by your council. So, so I wanna give you, I would never, and I never would think that you would accept our advice.
This is a new document to sign.
I would think that you will ask your council for their view of the document, and so, I just wanna point out to you, we have had a lot of dialogue back and forth with the city and their attorneys.
Yes, we have, and I'm still waiting on cost factors after all this time. Thank you.
Next question?
Thank you. Uh, the gentleman sitting at the end of the table, you know, sir, uh, the way I was, are you, you're an expert on parking garages?
No, I'm not.
You're the expert on parking garages?
Okay.
Then, then I, I have a, a question, and this is a question that's been lingering in my mind for, for a long, long time, is there's always, there's all, always operating costs, there's always maintenance costs, and before you build a facility like this, I'm sure that these costs are projected out, so that people would know what it's gonna be costing, like the city, the city wants to know, okay, in year one, with a brand-new facility, how much is this gonna cost in, in year two, year three, year four, year five? And I know with other parking garages that you've constructed across the United States, I'm sure you've done the same thing. Have you?
Yes, yeah, we can estimate that cost.
Yeah, so, so what I'd like to have, and hopefully the, the city council and the mayor are asking the same questions, that we'd like to have it, is a five-year projected cost analysis, both, uh, both, uh, I don't know if it's profit or loss.
We can't do that.
How about, how about pro- income and cost of operating such a facility, and with the amount of ridership that the South Shore is projecting, possibly the amount of income that would be coming in from the ridership on an annual basis?
Assuming that we go to a fee for parking basis, right? 'Cause right now, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, underwrite all the costs. So until NICTY choo- decides that we're gonna charge for parking, there's zero cost to the city.
Right.
So you want a projection that shows, once NICTY makes the decision to charge for parking, based upon projected numbers of riders, what that revenue would generate.
Right. One, I guess, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, is that once his, once his garage opens up, parking garage opens up, that the, in the city starts operating, then, then the city will start charging.
No.
Okay, so NICTY will take all the income in, uh, but we're still gonna be paying for the, uh, maintenance?
Air费.
No, okay, let me, all right.
So, until NICTY makes the decision as a system to start charging parking, um, to use our lots, and you know right now, you pull in our lot, you don't pay for parking, which is not the case over in, in most places around the country.
Right.
We don't charge for parking. So we're, the boards, we have to make a, a decision to charge for parking, of course, system-wide, that'll be a policy decision. Until such time they do that, we're gonna underwrite all of the maintenance costs for this facility. So, so let's say that the NICTY board doesn't do anything till 2025, you'll have zero responsibility for costs. However, if in 2021 or 2022, we made the decision to charge for parking, then we would be charging for parking in this facility, and then there'd be a projection of how many cars would be there and how much revenue we'd generate. So, so we could do that projection, I just wanted to make it clear, that until we charge for parking, you won't pay a single cent. You'll, you'll incur all the cost.
Well, we'll be reimbursing them, right, for the capital cost.
Yeah, you, you'll be maintaining it, but we'll, you'll send us a bill and we'll give you a hundred percent of the cost.
Okay, but if I can still have a, you know, projected cost, uh, income analysis, I'd appreciate that. I'll give you my name and email, all right? Okay, all right. Next question? Next question, probably once, probably twice, there we go.
Um, on page eleven, uh, it has a clause in here, uh, numbered, uh, line D, and you have, I don't understand, you have two Ds on, uh, on this page, doesn't have like that. But it's one sentence, and it says that, "Leans, community agrees not to suffer from any lean on mechanics or material to be placed upon the parking structure." So what are you, uh, what are you referencing to in here? Are you, uh, looking at the, uh, city? Explain that to me, how the city could get a lien on a building it doesn't own? Uh, because the way I read it, the only way you can get a lien on something is you own something.
Well, uh, again, not to offer you legal advice or the city legal advice, but if a contractor performs work on an owner's property for someone who's not the owner, they can still get a lien against the owner for the work performed on someone else's behalf. So this would just be an obligation to pay the contractors for what having a lien placed against the building.
Okay, so you're saying that any bills coming in that they have to be taken care of within, what, thirty days?
Sixty days.
Okay.
If the culture, if the mechanic's lien.
Okay. So, you know, with that, also, I, I'm gonna voice my concerns, since I wasn't on the city council before, but, you know, I, I have a real problem with you guys shutting down Pine Street. And, and now I see that you're gonna have a parking garage, or a parking space is projected to the west, I'm, excuse me, to the east. And I, for some reason, it's hard for me to fathom why you cannot start your boarding on that side of the street and leave Pine Street open. Because Pine Street is what you call, uh, main arterial, uh, is across arterial street for the city. And I think with all the money that's been invested in downtown, that you could start your loading ramp on, and then when that train clears out, that street can be open, you can put guards there, or, for all that matter, the city can finance the gates and the guards that meet federal, uh, guidelines and keep that street open. I, I really see, now that I see this rendering tonight, that you could do that if you wanted to. And I think that because, and this is the reason I say that, is that you're only leaving Ohio Street, Wall Bash and Washington Street open, besides Franklin. All that traffic is gonna be on that side of the town in Franklin Street. Now, for people that live here, when those rush hours are coming in, I've seen how it is at, uh, uh, station, what is that, in Chut- on forty-nine? Doon Park. I've seen how it is when people are coming in there in the morning, because I travel that road. It's very congested, and when they're leaving, it's very congested, when they're entering on the forty-ninth. And that's, that is what's gonna happen, projectively, on those arterial streets. But see, if you leave Pine Street open, you have another street that those people can exit south out of town, or even coming into town to get to the station. So with that being said, I also ask for, uh, any kind of, uh, traffic comes from the city, if they, they did it, the city, not NICTY, did the traffic study, and I'm still waiting on that, I don't think they did it. So, we'll hurry for the planning. Thank you. So I, I wish you would think about that, because a lot of people have been saying that, saying, making comments, that it's just like your...
A couple things I would say, one, I hate to get refer back to the agreement we made with the city at the time, but that, that is what we agreed to. Secondly, we're, uh, we're working towards getting the full funding grant agreement from the federal government. We are almost at a hundred percent plans. If, if we were to even entertain that, not that I'm saying that I think it's a good idea, and I disagree with a lot of your points on it, but if we did that, we'd put the project back two years and actually jeopardize the construction of the entire project, just to incorporate that element. So it's, I, I understand that that's your preference, and, and I, I'm listening to your points.
I respectfully disagree with your opinion.
'Cause not my opinion, this is a fact.
I don't understand, is that how much traffic you're gonna be putting on these other arteries in town? And, and I understand that that's what was projected out there, but I don't think that it was really looked at infinitely, or, or what they're gonna do. And I live on Washington Street, and I've seen these cars backed up all the way to St. Stan's, that's three blocks, when they have an event in town, 'cause people come in there and they just go right down Washington Street, and they go right down Wall Bash Street. So for people who live in Michigan City, it's gonna have an impact in our neighborhoods, and that's why I'm bringing that up. Do you know, and... that's why I'm bringing that up. You know, and if you could at least look at it and say, you know, okay, might put the project back a year, but it would, I think it would be a great benefit to the city of Michigan City. You know, that would benefit us. That wouldn't be a hindrance to us. Because what you're doing, in my opinion, and I know the planning department will disagree with me up and down because they're all gung-ho on this, it's going to impact our neighborhoods. And that's why I'm bringing it up. Because other people that live around there have brought it up to me. You know, it's not like I'm bringing this up with nobody's concern about it. Thank you.
All right, next question?
Please.
When will the station, the projected completion date be?
That's an easy question, Eric. Well, you get two answers. Because the FTA makes us do the base schedule, which is what we're going to drive to, and they also make us do a contingency schedule, so that you build an extra time just in case there's things that come along in construction. We are working towards...
I think it's towards the end for crash.
Is it May of '23?
It's around there.
Yeah, so it's somewhere around summer of '23, councilman, that we're projecting with our base schedule, that's what we're going to drive to. Our contingency schedule that the FTA makes us put in our plan, I believe is February of '24, or March of '24. They always want to have some degree of cost contingency and time contingency. So you may see, when you read a document, that you say, well, Mike said it was the summer of '23, and I'm seeing it's March of '24. And you have to know whether you're looking at the base schedule or the contingency schedule. So that answers the question.
And then one more question with the canaries, and I know that we've talked about this before, not the wires, but the...
The foundations?
Yeah. You know, and I've expressed my opinion to you about, you know, the rusty ones that are in Gary, and it just, you know, to me, it looks not very inviting. So what are we going to do for Michigan City? Didn't we agree that we were going to paint those a certain color? I know that you and I had talked about...
It's galvanized steel, so they won't be rusting over like you see up and down the line.
Right, it's going to be galvanized steel.
Yeah, galvanized steel.
Okay, all right. And then are they still going to be the square type? I know that when we began this process, you were talking about him like a T.
In some places, there'll be the cantilevers, and other places will have to do the portal structures. So around the stations, you've got to do the portal structure. But as we get along down the right way, we can go just to the cantilevers on each side.
Yeah, okay. I like that a lot better, because it looks a lot less truce, if I guess is the word to use, yeah. A lot more inviting. Thank you.
Just one quick one. How much has COVID-19 impacted the progress of the schedule?
Fortunately, the state declared the work that we were doing as essential service. So the efforts to advance the engineering design, everything we're doing, have not been slowed down. We're certainly impacted by COVID from a ridership standpoint, like anybody else who's in the transportation business, but we're all hoping that that's a short-term issue. But as far as project development, it has not impacted us.
Next question?
One more, Mike.
Yeah, Mike, so when does the project, you plan on moving into Michigan City on the West Side and start disrupting, you know, 11th Street, we start turning the tracks off? When is all that going to start?
Maybe I'll turn that over to Nicole or Greg, who've got a better handle on the phasing plan.
Let me pull up the phasing plan, and Greg can start to speak to it. Hand it to him first, and we can get along.
Well, like Mike had said, you know, we have a schedule with contingency and a schedule without contingency. So I'll speak towards the schedule without contingency. That will be the earlier dates projected. So anticipation would be right now currently for notice received to the contractor in approximately June for the first phase parcels, with a secondary phase of notices towards the end of July of 2021.
Okay.
One of the early phases, well, Michigan City is one of the longer phases of work, so there will be work starting up shortly thereafter in Michigan City. The expectation, the contractor, the contract staging and phasing is not mandated by the contract. However, there's a series of constraints that will most likely have the contractor completing the 11th Street reconstruction activities first, along with realigning the curve at Cedar and Lafayette. There's some track realignment that needs to occur at Cedar and Lafayette Streets that'll be one of the first activities we anticipate occurring, followed by eastbound 11th Street reconstruction, which will then, once 11th Street eastbound is reconstructed, westbound will be closed permanently. That's where the cul-de-sacs will be constructed, the platforms, the north track, and then subsequently the south track. So that's kind of the sequencing, the anticipated sequencing of phasing of work through Michigan City, the 11th Street corridor.
We have a meeting scheduled for Michigan City staff that you're welcome to join. And what I'm looking at right now is a PowerPoint I'm working on that has the details of the work that's occurring in every segment for the whole five phases for Michigan City. So at that meeting, we'll certainly email you a PowerPoint or PDF of it if you'd like, it'll literally walk through, this is what's happening in the summer or fall of this year, this is what's happening. So you can see step by step exactly what's going to happen. And then at that meeting, we're also going to show what we call the maintenance and traffic plans, which all it means is what streets are going to be shut down and when, and where is the traffic diverted to. So we'll be walking through those plans as well. And you'll hear things like, we're trying to avoid shutting down major north-south streets that are near each other at the same time. So you'll hear all of the info we've received from you and from the planning department and the transit department that has kind of driven those routes. So what Greg just provided is a little bit of a preview, but we'll go into much more detail in the meeting on the 21st of October. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Mike, just one more question, and we talked about this one also, but I just want to make sure we get all the details go over one more time. So at the crossings, you know, before we were talking about all the crossing, they're looking up crossings.
They're going to be flat.
Flat crossings.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Nolan, how many streets are now formally planned and are closing at this particular time?
They're listed in, again, they're listed in the agreement we signed with the city in 2016. So I can go through them if you'd like.
Oh.
Do you have a copy of the agreement?
Okay.
I'll read it. We are closing the, I recall, the following crossings to be closed. Carroll Avenue and Grace Street, those are future potential crossings if we further develop the maintenance facility in Michigan City.
Separate from double tracks.
Separate from double track. Maple, York, Cedar, Spring, Pine, Buffalo, Manhattan, Elston, Tennessee, Kentucky, Clare, Donnelly, and Carlin.
Okay, so you're not shutting down Lafayette Street?
Lafayette, I believe, stays open.
Only for construction purposes.
Yeah, I mean, there's temporary closures, of course, but not permanent. You're talking permanent closure, right?
Right, yeah. No, they're not, Lafayette's not.
Lafayette's on the list.
So are you planning on, is there going to be a responsible party for putting a, whatever, the train rail, what do you call it?
Crossing protection?
Yeah, crossing protection. Is the city going to be liable for that?
We are installing the crossing protection. We are going to work with the city and the mayor, and you guys choose, to pursue a quiet zone. And we've invested in the type of crossing equipment that will support a quiet zone, and we've worked with the Federal Railroad Administration, and we've walked the site with them, with the intention that due to the fact that we're closing these crossings, the FRA believes that that will potentially and hopefully likely enable us to qualify for a quiet zone if the city elects to do that. It's not a railroad, railroads can't get a quiet zone from the FRA. That's something a city has to ask in cooperation with the railroad, and we've said we will cooperate with the city if that's their desire.
Let me answer Lafayette just a little deeper. So last workshop we had, I handed out a list of the street changes, I call it, rather than, I think of them as changes as, rather than closures in some cases. Because remember, you'll have, like for example, at Lafayette, you won't be able to come through from the north because the platform will be right there. But you'll be able to come through Lafayette in the south and still turn eastbound down to 11th Street. So it's important, and that's on our website, I handed it out last time, I'm happy to make it available to anybody.
No, you are closing down Lafayette.
Well, because, only on the north side, because it will, but if you're driving on Lafayette from the south, you can turn right.
See that?
It's super close, Lafayette.
Well, it's basically, it's open to 11th Street only, it's not open...
Then you guys are only going to put in a loading ramp of about 900 feet. That's 45 blocks away.
I think we'll check on that, Nicole. I think Lafayette stays open.
It's open.
It's open? I had it wrong?
According to this, this is here.
Okay, we'll take another look at that.
Just for your information and the public's, I am going to pursue a quiet zone through Michigan City. I'm interested in that for myself.
And we should, we should be working on that mayor in not too distant future, together.
That's on my to-do list. I just spoke actually today with our systems people about what our next steps are. And what I'd like to do is get a meeting with you to talk about, you know, what new information do they need from us as a team to advance that request? And so these guys are the experts, they'll walk us through how this works in detail. The good news is, we did a lot of the work years ago when we designed the initial grade crossings and what types of warning devices we have. So the biggest first step was already taken probably in 2016, 2017, so.
We have consultants under contract, mayor, who are some of the best in the country, who deal with working with the FRA and quiet zones. So we'll work with you on that process.
Great, thank you. One concern that I do have that I've had for a while is, I was confused because this started when I was on the council from '12 to '16. It was only on the last version of your drawings that I saw Carroll Avenue is going to be closed. Now, did you earlier say that that is, you definitely intend on closing that, or is that's going to, may not be closed?
It is at the option of NICTD, and it would only be based upon our need to expand the rail yard. We're pretty constrained, we are constrained where we are now. You know our topography over there. We back up to Trail Creek, there's nowhere to expand the yard. So we're at full capacity now. If we were to have a need for expansion of service, we would have to go to the other side of Carroll and acquire some property there and have an upper storage yard and a lower storage yard. If that were to be the case, we would need to close Carroll. We don't have an immediate plan to do that today. So it is a potential Phase Two down the road, and right now, it's not on the horizon, but it's potential.
Okay, with that being the case, let me throw something off to your consideration. Several years ago, a five-year-old girl in Michigan City was killed by a hit-and-run driver on a street that ties Carroll Ave to Risky, the next street to the east, and has an overpass.
Okay.
And I've looked at that several times, because I used to do a TV show, and we talked about it at length. And I believe that that accident was quite possibly caused, or that hit running, I should say, because of the congestion that you see at Carroll Ave with the trains. I think somewhat the individual jumped over to Run Risky to get out of it. So please keep that in consideration when you decide you would Phase Two.
Okay, thank you.
Because it really does, once all these streets are closed, the only really true through streets between Spurman Ave and the Boulevard will be Risky or Vale all the way to the west. It really is, in my opinion, is going to adversely affect, very adversely affect public safety in that area.
I recall there was some discussion of taking a couple of those one-way pairs and changing them. I don't remember exactly. And this, we have to have some real discussions about a mayor when we get into it. So we'll be open to making sure we can do whatever we do to maximize safety. But I remember there were some discussions of maybe opening up some of those streets that are currently one-way, maybe having one of them to the, is it to the north there, be a two-way street. I don't remember at the time.
Well, that would be good, because there's a real shortage of access. There will be once that's done. And I guess the last thing that came up to my mind just while we've been talking, and when this project is completed, will positive train control be fully in place also?
Positive train control is fully in place today. So we are fully operational. We're waiting, the only thing we're really waiting for is we've submitted our positive train control safety plan to the Federal Railroad Administration. They're reviewing it right now. They're reviewing probably 30 or 40 plans from around the country. So we're waiting for our certification. But we've done everything necessary. We're fully operational with PTC.
Good, great. Any other questions? You know, Mike, as far as the closing of the streets, who's paying for that, for the street, for the construction work, for the streets that are being closed off? Is that part of the project, or is the city paying any part of that?
Project cost.
All project cost? Okay.
Any agreement?
Okay, any more questions? For once? Twice? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Nolan and your team. Thank you for obliging us.
Thank you for having us.
See you, everybody. Now go.
Thanks, guys, go.